At approximately 6:02 PM here on Thursday, October 13th. The reason being to work on the P O C D agenda. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I think we all know the fire evacuation. We all know the doors. We have no visitors, just go ahead, straight out or down the hall and out the back. Whenever the secretary is ready, please call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Louis Fiore.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Francis Alimo.
Here.
Kieran Majwadar, absent. Kenneth Talinsky, absent. John Petronella is here. Vincent Corillo is absent. Christian D'Antonio.
Here.
And Nicholas LaFicus.
Here.
Thank you. Not that it really makes a difference for this discussion because we're all equal here, but I will, just for the record, mention that we have two commissioners missing tonight. Commissioner Majwadar and Commissioner Holinsky. I don't believe they're both out of town, so Commissioner LaFicus and Commissioner D'Antonio will be sitting in. Not that it matters for this particular meeting, but just to let you know, even going forward of the rest of the night as full members. So, thank you. We're here again to review the draft P O C D. Let's start off by saying I want to thank everybody. We did a wonderful job last meeting on Tuesday night, ripped right through it. I think staff was pretty happy, too, with the progress we made on it. So, we have, we're open back up again tonight. I know that Christian, Commissioner D'Antonio has given us some things to discuss tonight. And also, I'm sure you other members might have thought of something else over the last couple of days. So, I think I'll just begin with Christian, if you guys don't mind, since he gave us something of substance. And then we'll go around for any other comments or additions or changes you guys want to do. Christian, want to, for listening on what you provided for us tonight?
Sure. Yep. Yeah, I won't go over the exact wording because we do, I mean, unless anybody requests it, but it is on paper. It's everybody's got in their packets and it should be on the record. So, these are points that I pointed out primarily topics that I felt were missing from the P O C D, starting with Chapter Four in the Natural Resource Protection and Conservation chapter. I noticed a lack of call out of the importance of trees, tree preservation and planting. So, my proposal is to add a short subsection. I didn't pick a specific spot in the chapter. I feel like that's kind of, maybe that's something we can come up to agreement with. I think it can be flexible, as well as a handful of strategies for improvement to keep it consistent with the rest of the chapter, as well as to give us something, you know, as a town to act upon. Those strategies for improvement become recognized as a tree city. And I gave an example of right down the street, Long Meadow is a tree city. You can kind of tell the difference. If you go up Route Five, there's kind of a stark difference between towns. So, it's something to strive for. Encouraging the planting of native trees, both public and private investment. And then, and this is something I've heard before, too, and it is a normal thing in many towns and cities is having a tree replacement program. So, trees need to be cut down for utility work or dead, damaged, or just otherwise, maybe for development as well.
Just to let you know, Christian, if I may, I think on that part, there is somewhat of a tree replace, like if ever source, I believe, cuts a tree down, then they have to offer to the resident or in a town property if we want one in its place.
Okay.
And we do have an arbor, at least in my data, wasn't, somebody in DPW was designated the arborist, and I can't, I don't know if that position's still around.
The tree warden, which is Donald Noon.
Donald, yeah, thank you. So, I'm glad you have it here, but I'm just giving you that background.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. Yeah, I'm not entirely familiar with, you know, all our history and what we have in place entirely today. So, that's great. So, that's that. And then in Chapter Eight, Infrastructure, there was something that stood out to me was the alternative, the subsections on alternative modes of transportation. So, I proposed an addition of a sentence to the alternative modes of transportation introduction, just to share the, so what was provided in the P O C D was great. I just wanted to add a line to exemplify the benefits to the town, right, the entire reason we're doing this. So, that's what that proposed sentence is. There's a public sidewalk short section. I'm proposing to reclassify it pedestrian infrastructure, just to cover the wider range of topics, because pedestrian infrastructure, for example, can include crosswalks, pedestrian crossing signals, and just general design, not just availability of sidewalks. And then what I'm proposing immediately after the pedestrian infrastructure section, I suppose if we want, we can combine them. There is a lot of overlap between the two, is bicycle infrastructure section. So, this one kind of surprised me that it was missing, because there has been initial attempts in town to build some bicycle infrastructure. So, I think it's important to call that out, that some progress has been made. It's been documented in the Complete Streets Plan, which is mentioned elsewhere in the P O C D. But there's certainly room for improvement there. So, yeah, I'll open it up for any comments or...
Any comments or questions on any of this?
No.
I think the only, if I may, the only, the only thing, I'm just having, just a little bit of problem with is I don't, I don't really, I think in our P O C D, want to make reference to a neighboring town. I like, I like, you know, as a positive, you know, I just don't want to have a reference to a neighboring town. So, if we can just reword that sentence.
Sure.
And that's the only thing that struck out to me. Just give me a second here.
Makes sense. Yeah, I mean, and if it helps to, right, it's, I mean, it's a nationwide program, so if we can generalize it, so.
How about something like...
A lot of flexibility.
As a positive enhancement, this would display a commitment to tree preservation, planting and replacement, something like that. I just, I just, that one sentence just has to be reworked a little bit. Not everything after displays, I think that's fine. You know what I'm saying, Christian?
Yeah, no, I completely get that. We could say, you know, look to the Arbor City USA program for positive, or the Tree City USA program.
As a positive, it would, it would display a commitment to tree preservation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
As a positive, it would display a commitment to tree preservation, planting, and, you know, comma, and replacement creates an appealing, yeah. Does that sound right to everybody?
Yeah.
Did you get that, Lori?
So, after Tree City USA community, as a positive, it would display commitment to tree preservation, planting and replacement.
Yeah.
And how replacement creates and how, all right, we'll make it work.
Yep. Does anyone have any objections to these sections being added and having, Lori?
I've got one comment.
Yeah, please.
From under bicycle infrastructure. I just think the word, second line down, the word severely is too severe. And I think the sentence, just without deleting that word, it's...
I can't find it. Where are you?
What was that?
Second.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Is your mic on? I can't hear you.
Your mic's on.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Start again, John, please.
Okay, yeah. Second line down, under bicycle infrastructure, I think that the word severely should be omitted and it should just read, but the bicycle path network is lacking and could benefit significantly. I just think the word severely is too severe and it kind of, it's kind of more of an opinion and so forth.
Yep.
Kind of much falls on what we were trying to do the other night, too, John.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any comments? Commissioner Alimo? Commissioner DeGray?
Nope.
Everybody else, pretty good? So, I think, Lori, based on those two things, I think we're, you know, I don't think we need a motion. I think there's a consensus here to adopt everything, all of Christian's recommendations, and just have you and Don add those to the document appropriately.
Yep.
And please, as you guys find something and you don't think it works somewhere, please get back, you know what I'm saying, get back to us.
Good job.
Yeah, thank you, Christian. Very nice job.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Do you have any questions on it?
No, I don't. I was just going to say that, I mean, actually, you continue on. I'm sure people have other comments and questions or...
Sure. I think, I think we, before we get to individual ones, I think we covered anything that Commissioner Holinsky brought as, I think, I'm pretty sure, just give me, just give us one second, everyone just mind taking a look at his documents, see if we missed anything or we want to discuss anything more. I just can't remember.
So, I have a question.
Yeah.
Because he has an issue or a concern with inclusionary zoning. And that's one, as I said the other night, that is one tool to spread affordable housing out so it's not clustered, which actually makes it even more valuable. So, I didn't know, I guess I didn't get a real great consensus, one way or the other, from the group on promoting that or not.
Actually, I guess we should, I think it's probably time to discuss that tonight, since we're closed. Can you remind me what page that's on here, Lori, if you remember?
Oh, my, I'm just reading his memo.
Yeah, how about the, I know it's included in the P O C doc somewhere.
Under the...
Housing?
Housing.
Forty-three starts housing.
Forty-two starts the housing.
Looks like page forty-six on the latest.
Page forty-six.
Forty-six.
I knew where, I knew what it said, I just couldn't remember where it was.
I think you bring up a good point. It's something I think we really need to discuss as a body, if this is, you know, where we're going with this. So, would anyone like to start off? The Commissioner DeGray?
Is there another, because I think when we say inclusionary, it's not exclusionary. It just might send a, people don't understand what inclusionary zoning means. So, I'm thinking, is there like workforce zoning? I don't know.
So, I mean, you know, we tried to label affordable housing as workforce, because in essence, that's exactly why it was created, was to allow the workforce to work in the towns that they...
Live in.
Well, to live in the towns that they work in. For instance, like in Litchfield or someplace like that. I mean, a police officer or a hairdresser could never afford to live in that town, because they don't have affordable housing, because it's a wealthy community. So, it really is, it was designed for the workforce, so they could actually live in the town that they work in.
I'm just thinking...
And the inclusionary zoning basically says that it would require that if you're doing a subdivision, and you could set it up saying thirty lots subdivision, you know, maybe, maybe five percent has to be...
Yeah, I understand the percentage of it. I'm just saying that word, because I don't think if...
It's, it's a standard planning term.
It's a planning term, but if we're...
It should be in the definitions.
It should be in the definitions when we say inclusionary, because there's, people might not understand what that means, just like we decided to put houses slash, housing slash units, houses slash units, because people would assume, and I'm just guessing, you're talking about apartments. So...
Not necessarily.
I know, but that's why when we talked about it the other night, we said ten houses slash units, so that people would understand. They could be houses, or it could be apartments, whatever. So, I think we need definitions for some of these terms that are planning terms for the layperson who opens up this book and says, hey, well, look at what it says here. I don't know, I don't want, you know, all that in mind.
That's a good point. So, so you want inclusionary zoning to be defined, and then, as you had said, all the acronyms, you know, DU is dwelling unit, and dwelling unit can be an apartment, and it could be a single-family house, it could be...
Right.
A studio.
Right. So, I think some of this stuff to the layperson could be very confusing.
Okay.
I mean, most of the people who read it are going to be intimidated by it. Planning and zoning, people and planners understand what it is, but, and attorneys understand what it is. But if I were to pick this up and hadn't sat here, I'd be like, what?
No, and we want the community at large to understand what this is. It's, it's the community's plan.
Right, okay.
So, that...
Thank you. That's my only concern about that.
Is, I guess, is everyone looking for a consensus to make sure that we include, no pun intended, the inclusionary zone provision in our P O C document? Is everyone comfortable with that? Is everyone comfortable with the suggestion of ten housing units or more?
Yes.
Okay? I'm not seeing any majority of negatives.
No.
I would like to make a recommendation, since, that I do think the last sentence of that particular, because I can't remember what we did at this the other night. We did so much.
Right.
I don't mind it staying in there, but I do think that the example should be removed. So, such a provision could include fee in lieu of affordable housing provision to provide funding for the housing trust fund. We talk about the housing trust fund right above it, so I don't think there's a need for that redundant sentence to be in there.
Are you taking out?
So, Lori, if you could make sure that that parts out, I think everyone's in favor.
Didn't we eliminate housing trust fund the other night?
I don't think we eliminated it, because we're leaving that to the council to see. It's not us, but we thought we'd leave it in.
So, but, but the point of this is that you would provide for a fee in lieu of this affordable housing.
Yeah, I, yes, I think provide in, yes, provide in lieu of, but I don't think we should give a specific example. Because you...
Okay, so you just want to say such a provision could include a fee in lieu of affordable housing provision.
Right, right.
And, and the sentence there?
Yes, yes, because it, you know, as you and I know, there's other things, too, that could be done, too.
Mm-hmm, okay. I, okay.
Yeah, does that make sense?
Yep. It does now.
Does that make sense, everybody? Everyone happy with that?
Yeah.
And I think, just above that, just a reminder, because I think Christian D'Antonio brought up another thing, a couple of bullets ahead, above that, allow mixed-use developments in B R and B P. We also said we wanted to add B L to that, too.
Yep.
You think there was, you had that one? Okay.
See, I have many notes on that page.
Yeah, no, you do. I just, yeah. All right, so...
Yep.
So, we're okay with the, and I think there was, we'll get back to Kenny's point here. I think there was consent, because, because I don't know if Nikki had a chance to watch, there was consensus, I think, for most of us to, if we're going to eliminate some of the public hearings on site plan applications, we'll do that when we look at the regulations.
Oh, of course.
Right, right, we're not, so we wanted to, I don't want to say downplay that in this document. That's unfair, that's the wrong, right term I want to use, but we didn't want to emphasize that as much in this document, because we'll have to look at that individually.
But we want to take out the elimination part in there.
Yes, well, yeah, well, we aren't, this isn't, yeah, we're not going to, that's why I'm making a point, I think Lori knows that, she goes through the doc. Did we talk about advocating for a special agricultural zone? Did we even discuss that the other, the other night?
Ken brought it up, but I don't see how you can do it, because there's agriculture all over town. But that's just my opinion.
So, so there were, there's a couple references to agriculture, and one was to, to do an agricultural zone, but then there's also to create a farm-friendly community.
Right.
Which are two different things, but kind of leading to the same.
Yeah.
So, I think that in general, from what I've heard from this commission and from what I've heard from the citizens, I mean, everybody wants to preserve the agriculture, especially in the southeast part of town.
Rapid.
So, is that right? So, getting, yeah, southeast, yeah, that one. Getting my bearings off. So, but the farm-friendly regulations are basically just, it allows, it just makes farming more front and center as, as a use, as a permitted use, to be permitted pretty much anywhere. Obviously, you still have, you know, some regulations and stuff and setbacks for pig sties and things like that. It just, it just makes the community more aware that, you know, farming is welcome here. And it might create buffers, you know, automatic buffers. If you are putting in a subdivision next to a farm, it'll say, you have to have a setback from the farm...
Sure.
To protect yourselves, so you don't complain about the farm, the smells, the dust, whatever.
Yeah.
So, but, you know, creating an agricultural zone, I'm not sure that, you know, maybe an overlay or something like that. But, again, when, when you see these strategies, always say, consider making this, or consider...
Right, right.
You know, enabling this, or whatever. These are all considerations that we can look into in the future. So, just because it says it, once you actually get down and start doing some of the nitty-gritty, you know, research and looking at how that's really going to work, sometimes it's like, you know what, this is, this isn't right for us.
Right.
But once you, until you start actually doing that exercise, you might not know that.
And I think, yeah, I think it's pretty, and the agriculture, let's be honest, if those of us that know Winfield, there's only one area we would, you do an overlay, and it's really the R-88 area.
Yeah.
I mean, everything else is pretty well overdeveloped.
And, I mean, quite honestly, it's already kind of a farm thing. But the thing is, is if you do an agricultural zone, are you only going to, are you going to restrict it to just agriculture?
Right, right.
And how are you going to work that?
Right, right.
Well, if, if you do that, aren't you somewhat getting involved with, like, condemning the property from, from, could be an owner that is not farming the property and so forth, and now you're restricting them? So, excuse me, just want to be a little bit careful and cautious of that.
Exactly. So, that's, that's where you start getting into, it's like, well, wait a second, because that, so we're not going to allow any subdivisions there?
Right.
So, but, and, you know, then, you know, grandfather that was planning on leaving his farm to grandkid, and, you know, grandkid doesn't want anything to do with farming, but wants to put a subdivision in, so that, you know...
Limit set.
Bested rights and things like that all come up.
There's obviously a state program where, you know, farmers can sell their development rights to their property, and the state pays them for it, and then that pretty much grandfather's in that, the land can only be used for farming going forward, so. And I think a lot of farmers are taking advantage of that.
Yeah.
I know of some that, that have.
Plus, in our P O C D, we are, we are mentioning, considering, looking at the right to farm, a few other things in the document. Combine all that, it probably, there's no need for, to go to this route if we combine all that. So, any other comments on that? I think that was kind of it. I think most of the other things that Ken had in his document pertain to us when we get to the regulation changes in the spring.
Yeah.
So, we'll put that to bed. So, I'm looking around for any other comments here, because I think the next, you know, I'm not saying this will be our last meeting on this, but I know Lori's ready to get with Don and start working, so now's not our last chance, but it's a good chance for anything else you guys might have saw in the document or thought about since the last meeting that you wanted to talk about.
I just want one comment I want to make to Lori, and it would go to Matt, too, but have you, do you have any real or other comments that, or suggestions? Certainly put, you know, respect in your opinion or Matt's as well, but is there something in there that you see that maybe we didn't?
So, I, I think I've mentioned most of my comments, and, you know, adding the open space, you know, small lot, open space subdivision, and downzoning the residential developments that were developed as R-17 and are now R-44, you know, bringing those back down to their original zone, so nothing is non-conforming anymore, because we spent a lot of time on that.
All right.
You know, and, you know, the, we will have to do some deep thinking about our industrial zone out on the eastern side of town. You know, consider adding residential to that, we've talked about that, but then, so what does that do? Then you start having an impact of residential going into an industrial use or next to an industrial use, and so we have to kind of think hard about that one.
But we kind of addressed a little bit of that with the, with the suggestion in here of creating some sensitive areas.
Yeah.
Which I like very much, what might help us in that area somewhat.
Yep.
And the other thing I'll mention, Commissioner Alimo's going to like this, that's why I'm mentioning it, that I ran it to, actually, I run it to Lori every day, but I ran it to her the other day, and I mentioned something I'd forgotten on the way home. I asked her to please add in there somewhere in the industrial park, some type of wording where, to us, we look at whether we can reclaim some of the land in the industrial park, because I know that's something that's dear to your heart and some other friends of yours. So, that, we are going to add that somewhere. I'm not sure how strong the verbiage is going to be, Frank, but we'll add it in there.
I think that'll be a great asset to the whole community, to the town, if we can, you know, open up some of that land.
At least we can try to look at it, yeah, let's see if we can.
I often talk about having the wetlands reevaluated within the industrial park.
Well, that's kind of what we allude to here.
I think we should add to that, because I think some of the maps are very, very old.
Yeah.
I think some of the conditions may have changed.
Yeah, that's, that's what we're alluding to, yes.
Yeah.
You would have to do that in order to reclaim some of the land, for sure.
Thank you.
So, I just want to let you know, we did, had that, asked her to please add that. Nick?
Yeah, I believe there's a Supreme Court case where they're looking at the designations of wetlands, so it could get redefined.
Yeah.
And I think we have to wait and see.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that local?
U.S.
U.S. Supreme Court.
U.S. Supreme Court.
Nationally, some of the president administrations' policies are being challenged.
Hmm, interesting.
So, it might overturn a lot of things based on their decision, as you know.
Because, I mean, you could go to Massachusetts, and the definition of wetlands is completely different than it is for Connecticut, where here it's very much soil-based, poorly drained, very poorly drained, fluvial, alluvial, it's basically just soil. You don't need critters or grass or anything like that. And up north in Massachusetts, it's location on the landscape, and they do consider the, you know, the consideration of having wetlands, critters, and wetlands vegetation and things like that. It's actually way more complicated to interpret up in Massachusetts. Here, it's, if the soil type is there, it's there.
Right.
And it may not look like a wetlands, but the soil type says it is.
Or it looks like a wetlands and it's not.
Exactly.
I think we probably have more than that than the other way.
Yeah.
But thank, thank you.
That would, that would be interesting. You know, and I think one of the things here is to consider getting new wetlands mapping as well, so.
Yes, yeah.
That's one of the goals in, in there, in the wetlands part.
In the wetlands, right.
About redefining, looking at new wetlands maps.
Mm-hmm.
Because ours are old.
Which the state needs to do. Nineteen seventies?
Yeah, seventies.
Look, on that piece, maybe encouraging, in that paragraph, maybe encouraging the new types of mitigation, Lori, that we've seen happen recently. I know we've proved a couple of projects, and one was Shaker Pines Fire Department. They made a passive recreational or a pond.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, of course, the, the gas station that's going, the Noble.
Yeah.
I mean, that particular land has been tried to be developed, as you know, over, over the years, and the wetlands always stopped it. It seems like the new, modern ways of mitigation and making it a nice area where people can visit, instead of just, you know, empty land.
Yeah.
So, I don't know if that's something that we could put in to encourage new styles of mitigation that incorporate, you know, passive areas where people can...
I think that's in there, Frank. I think it's in there in the I W W A section.
Okay.
It might be in, like, might not be summed up as nicely as you just said. I think it's in two separate bullets, but I think, I believe it's in there.
But we just talked about just focusing on a certain area.
Well, I wanted to get that certain area in there.
Right, yeah, and I, you know, and I think...
Yeah, industrial park.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
In those areas, I mean, some of that kind of nice work can be done.
Yep.
Where, you know, people can go out there and, you know, walk around, and it won't be so intrusive on people. And I think that's, I mean, I'm liking this new way of mitigating wetlands.
Yeah, see if it works, see if we keep doing it.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And that, Lori?
It's very expensive.
Yeah.
And it's not always successful, but they're getting better.
Yeah, but the nice part is, you know, people can go and walk around the pond or sit next to it, or, you know, I just, I think it's just a, adds to the community, you know, quality of life, where people can just, you know, go out for a walk around somewhere. So, thank you.
Lori, I had a quick question for you, because we've alluded to updating the wetland maps in here, and I know there's some G I S issues with our software that might not be, quite be as robust as we would like it to have, so, to implement any of these things going down the road, I just want to say, ask this for the record, and there are some budget constraints, like, I would take it in the I T side to implement some of the things that we are suggesting at P O C D, so I guess I'm just asking you in the back of your mind, as you and Matt and Georgie start, you know, if you could just keep a little side card with that will be, because, you know, the staff might need some of our assistance to sell some of this to the council if approved going forward, if this is going to require software upgrades to our system, and I'm assuming it will, just understanding some of the issues here, so, so I make you aware, we, you know, might get called upon to support them in the presentation to the council, how important it is that those things get done, if Paul Russell can't find that in his current budget or Lori can't, so I just wanted to make that offer and just make that note for the record.
Yeah, it's a good point.
Yeah, Georgie does the best she can, yeah.
Yeah, so, many P O C Ds have that issue, and that's why we try to find solutions, how to implement whatever the strategy is, and a lot of it is seek funding for, through grants or, you know, have the town allocate X number of dollars every year towards a specific project or things of that nature.
Do we need to have a bullet in there about seeking funding for I T, I'm just asking, now's the time, yeah.
So, I mean, it's kind of assumed.
Okay.
You know, if we can seek funding for it, we will.
Okay.
And, you know, so, we'll be, you know, we'll have a good understanding of the P O C D, and so, when we hear about a grant coming up, it's like, oh, maybe that'll be good for this project in here, so, it's a good possibility that the state might re-fly the, you know, maybe the CROG, the Cogs might get together, and Cogs get together and re-fly the state for the wetlands.
Ooh, that'd be nice.
Which would be really good.
How about the G I S software?
Well, if they do that, they'll map it.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yeah. So, and then share it with the municipalities, I don't know if that's actually in the works, but I know that there's been discussion amongst planners and wetlands agents and saying, it's like, you know, we really needed to get this updated.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, all right. I'm looking around here, because this will probably be the last working session we have until Lori and Don complete all the changes and we get the next draft of the documents, so is anything else anyone would like to add on the P O C D?
Just, I know we talked about, like, wetlands, are we going to get the Wetlands Commission's feedback, like, where do they fall in on the process?
They're already, they're already in here.
Wetlands and Conservation Commission?
The I W W A section and the Conservation and Agriculture section, we're basically done by those commissions, those committees, yes.
Great, awesome.
Yeah, I'd like to highlight and stay on what we talked about, an implementation committee relative to the P O C D, I know that's something I think we have to go to council with, but that should be part of it, I think it'd be helpful to actually get things going, you know, I mentioned right off the bat the other night that a lot of things never happen, and it's, you know, we, you know, we panel all these committees, like, the P O C D committee, they put so much time and so much work into it, and, you know, a lot of the things don't happen, and I, you know, I've been on committees and had that, you know, situation, and it's frustrating, so I think if we can make, you know, have that oversight or implementation committee, I think that would be beneficial, and, you know, some things can get going. And then, on that, as we redo our zoning regulations, we should look at the P O C D too, and pull some things out of the document and put it into the regulation, so it actually can happen, because, as we know, you know, we sit here and argue about, you know, with applicants and applicants argue with us about the P O C D, but it really isn't a controlling document, it really has no teeth. So, if we can take some of the things, or maybe the new committee likes, we can implement it into our, into our regulations, so.
I think that's, I'll use the housing, you got two questions here, so I'll use the housing part as answer 20 questions, that, excuse me, certainly is our intent, I think, the housing issue, that we have in the P O C D, Lori and staff's intent is to basically pull that out, and we'll use that to create a new housing plan that we have to submit, or most of that, not all of it, to the state, and then we'll also use that at that point to recraft some of our regulations that we have to do in the spring at the same time. So, I think that's a perfect example of that plan app. Lori, do you think tonight is a good night to discuss the makeup of this committee, or as long as you make note of that, and we'll get back to that?
To discuss who should be on it?
Or just the makeup on it, or do you want to make a note of that for now?
Well, I mean, the recommendation is to have it, to create one.
Yeah, so I think we should have that somewhere, let's not lose sight of that.
Oh, yep.
And it's not sure we're right, I think we all need to think about it a little bit more, and we could, we're going to, we're looking at this again one more time, when they do all the changes.
Well, thank you, though, for emphasizing that.
And then we'll, we'll get back to that again, this gives us, you know, a few weeks or so to think about what we would like to recommend to the council with that makeup of that commission be, does that sound like a reasonable approach?
Sure, yeah.
Does everybody sound reasonable? So, that's that Strategy Action Plan Commission.
If you have suggestions now, I mean, we've certainly got the time, so, I mean...
What would you mean, the number of people?
Yeah, I don't even really, I haven't, actually, I didn't go home and think about it. We don't even know the number of people, we don't even know at this point who we'd want to include.
So, we're talking about the P O C D Implementation Committee, right?
Yes.
Okay, not the Housing Committee.
I'm sorry.
Not the Affordable Housing?
No, 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 no.
Okay, because we were talking about that might be in there.
You know, thinking about that, some of the people that were on the P O C D Development Committee may be interested, you know, they're familiar with this document and may want to be members of that new committee.
Again, I think we need, I think we need, I think we need to think about this, how big we want to recommend to the council be, who we'd want on it, do we want Representative Planning Zone, Representative I W W A, Representative Conservation, a council, someone from finance, staff.
You have to have that.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, absolutely.
That's what it's got to do with. Make it function.
You'd want to have, you know, someone from public safety, so again, and now we're talking about a 10-person, you know, 12-person commission, and then we, yeah, I'm looking at Lori, and I've been on those, so I'm just throwing out, let's think on it, let's not lose sight of that, we can get back to that next time we get the doc in front of us, and...
And that's exactly what I asked, let's just not lose sight of that, make sure that we do it, you know?
And we'll get back to you on that. Does that sound reasonable, everyone, the reasonable approach? And please, please do think about it.
No, yeah, for sure.
Any other comments? Nick, anything you want to add, because I know you missed a lot, you feel pretty comfortable?
Yes.
Seeing that, Lori, I think we're done with this pass on this, and you and Don and staff can get to work, I'm sorry if I'm chuckling, because I know what you got to do, so, it's not really funny, but I think we're all done with this P O C D meeting, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Vice Chairman Higley, seconded by Vice Chairman DeGrave to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
So, I say, aye, this special meeting is completed at 7:38. Thank you very much.
October 13th at 7:00 o'clock. Would please, everybody rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Fire evacuation is right behind you. Out those doors there. Or down through these doors here, down the stairs and out the hall. And please, if there is need to evacuate, please go away from the building as far as you possibly can. Secretary, please call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Louis Fiore.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
John Petronella is here. Francis Alamo.
Here.
Kieran Majmudar, absent. Kenneth Holinsky is absent. Vinnie Guerillo, absent. Christian D'Antonio.
Here.
Nicholas LaFicus.
Here.
Thank you, Secretary. Let the record show, we have two regular members missing tonight. They're out of town, Mr. Commissioner Holinsky and Commissioner Majmudar. So alternates Christopher D'Antonio and Mr. LaFicus will be sitting in as full-time members tonight, so we'll have a full quorum of seven. Senator, next on the agenda is minutes, approval of minutes. Take a motion to approve the minutes of September 8th.
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Chairman Higley, seconded by Vice Chairman DeGray to accept the minutes. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Commissioner DeGray?
On the September 8th minutes, on page three, first paragraph, I think it might be misplaced because it, the paragraph before it was talking about, discuss the next step and was looking for information about the parking lot and some other things, and about the variances for landscaping. And then it says, they cannot get the camp, that very next paragraph, they can't, cannot get to the camera until the parking lot is gone. It doesn't seem to flow that way. It would probably go back to the third from the bottom. I'm just, it didn't flow. It's like it's in the wrong place. Like it's part of another conversation. Matt, I'm trying to explain. Yeah. Okay. And then on the September 22nd...
We're not there yet. I would have to add to that, if I can, about the minutes, if I may just make a general statement as your chairman. I think, as some of you might know, there is a big difference in minutes between a transcript and minutes.
Yes.
Minutes are basically not a transcript. They're just a recording of the action and the votes or any real pertinent information. This is more of a transcript, which I happen to like and thank you very much, staff and our recording secretary. I happen to like transcripts. That's what I'm used to doing. I know Nick is too, and I know Commissioner Holinsky would be too. So I don't think, in this case, this is a transcript. Not that it's not important, but I would like to make, you can make an amendment to maybe just strike that, those two sentences out.
That's fine. But then I also just remembered on page five, one to third paragraph down, clarification was provided regarding income restricted. It should be units, not united. And then it goes, yeah, units. And then it goes on to, once fully occupied, 146 sisters will be living in one unit and 24 in the other unit. There's only 24 sisters living at the convent now, and they're not going to increase that. So I think that sentence needs to be either corrected or removed.
Where, also, one unit, should that be building?
Right. Yeah. I think it should be building. Yeah.
All right. So are you making amendment for three changes? Are you done with the September 8th?
Yes.
There's amendment being made to strike out on page three, the first two sentences, because we really don't know where that relates to. No one can remember. They cannot get the camera, et cetera, et cetera. That's part of your motion. Second motion is to amend the minutes on page five, where it says, clarification was provided regarding income restricted, united, to be restricted units.
Right.
Also to remove, where it says, once fully occupied, 146 sisters will be living in one unit. You want to strike out that whole sentence?
Yeah. Well, and 24 in the other. There's only 24 sisters.
All right. So we're going to be, again, I think it's hard for us to strike that out unless someone went back and wanted to listen to the transcript to see what was really there on that one. That's not a typo error. That's, that's a clarification error.
That needs a clarification then.
So I guess basically on that, we're not going to accept the minutes. So I would say at this point, staff has to go back and find out what that says, because that's, that's pretty, that's not like a typo error. That's like significant.
That's very significant.
So keep your amendments on, on the thing. We're going to go back and we're going to, I'm going to, are you removing your amendment from the table?
Yes.
So the amendment to change the minutes has been removed.
Yes.
Now, will I accept amendment or a motion to table the September 8th meeting?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Higley, seconded by Commissioner DeGray to table the September minutes. All those in favor? Am I saying aye? Let the record shows unanimous abstention. Six tabled and one abstention. Yeah. We already voted on it, Nick, so I'm sorry. Okay. Who's, uh?
I don't know.
Okay. Sorry about that, everybody. Against the kind of static coming through. Could be a storm. So, do you want abstain from that, Nick? We already discussed on it, so I'm not going to bring it back. So we're going to bring it back again. All right. So basically, the vote was five to table with two abstains, because Commissioner LaFicus, Commissioner Alamo, were not here. So that will still, that'll be tabled. Now we'll go on to September 22nd minutes. Is there a motion to approve or accept the minutes for September 22nd?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Higley, seconded by Commissioner DeGray. Discussion. Commissioner DeGray.
Page one. Under, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seventh paragraph, it says, Commissioner DeGray requested that the occupant count on page five be changed to 24. It kind of is out of context of what we were talking about. So from, what was the original number being changed back to 24? So.
So again, you want these tabled until we get clarification on September 8th. Is there a motion to table these minutes?
So moved.
That's the only issue.
So we're going to table both until the clarification on the minutes from the eighth is done, please. So, motion made by Commissioner DeGray to table. Is there a second? By Commissioner Higley. All those in favor, table in these minutes. Also, until that information gets clarified on September 8th, we can't clarify the information on that line for the 22nd. All those in favor? The record showed there was five to accept the table and two abstentions. The abstentions from Commissioner Alamo, Commissioner LaFicus. Downturn report, everyone received the September 28th report, which is, you know, really just a highlight. I'm sure there's no questions on that. Now we'll move on to public participation. At this point in the meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission welcomes comments, concerns, and opinions related to planning and zoning in Enfield. For anyone who is present, provide that no one may discuss any matter of business at this time that is already elsewhere on the agenda, any matter that is part of an open public hearing of this commission, or any matter where a decision of the commission may be pending, which also includes anything that's in legal status. So is there anyone here who'd like to come in front of the commission to discuss anything other than nature?
Thank you.
Sure. Come on up and we'll see if it fits.
Good evening.
Please make sure the mic is on. The red button should be lit.
Hello?
Yep. There we go. Thank you. Good test. Can you just please identify yourselves for the record, please?
My name is Susan Budd. I live at two Francis Avenue in Enfield.
Okay.
Melanie Dubiel, four Francis Avenue in Enfield.
Yep.
We have a couple of concerns about the zoning for Pizza Palace. We, obviously, we live on the street, on the side of it. But the traffic is getting to the point where it's unbelievable. We can't get out of our driveways. The garbage that's being left behind, you know, the noise, you know, is becoming a nuisance between everything going on. They're parking on the medians. They're parking in front of the stop sign, so you can't pull out of the street. I've actually had to go over my front lawn just to get out of my driveway, because they're parked so close to our driveway in the edge that I can't get out. There's no way a fire truck will get through there. And I know, it's getting worse and worse. We've, I've talked to the owner of Pizza Palace, and he's saying, oh, he wants to work with us, but nothing is being done. And my concern is, how did the zoning, were we supposed to, was anybody supposed to be notified, you know, when he went from just a restaurant to, with a little bar, to a live entertainment? I know he's got the little rest, you know, a takeout.
Takeout, I believe.
But, you know, the parking goes all the way down the street. We've had cars that have been totaled, not totaled, but, you know, have been hit on the street. I know Highland Park has got the same problem. I've talked to people there. And, yeah, I just...
I think our concern is, when, we're assuming he got his bar changed... I, I think our concern is, when, we're assuming he got his bar changed from just a regular bar to a bar with live entertainment or entertainment? Because since that's changed, when he did all his renovations, the parking is very bad. And it is, it's a dangerous situation. I mean, I've lived here all my life and I've seen it go from a gas station prior to Jimmy's, then it was a restaurant, then it became a restaurant with a bar, now it's a bar with entertainment. The bar, it was no issue with the parking. He's only got 33 spots there. And I guess, I don't know if that was even taken into consideration, the amount of people that it would draw in for live entertainment. Now, I, I get woken up 1:30, 2 o'clock in the morning from cars screeching out, people talking, yelling on my front lawn and throwing beer bottles, they're, you know, they've been drinking, they're obnoxious. And it's just, it's a nuisance right now. It's residential and I just, you know, I, I don't know.
How he got zoned for live entertainment and went from, you know, the, the restaurant with a little bar to pretty much a complete bar. And it's kind of the only one in Enfield. So I understand, you know, everybody's going there, but, you know, it doesn't seem like the neighborhoods were taken into consideration when this went through. And, you know, a residential area, we've got little kids that are playing on the street and, you know, these cars are coming down, they're parking, one of the, and I understand it's not, you know, but, you know, you get a little kid that's going to come out from behind a car because they're all the way down the street. They can't even ride their bikes down the street because the, you know, people are parking on both sides and, you know, they're not just parking on the curbs, they're, they're parking a foot out. And I've got pictures of trucks that are parked a foot out on the curbs. And, like I said, you know, if there's an emergency, my neighbor, his wife had a stroke. God forbid if this was like this two years ago, there, there's no way an ambulance would have got down there. And we're just, like I said, you know, just wondering how he got zoned and, you know, without anybody, without any notice, I guess. And if it could please be addressed because it's, it's not getting any better. And once the snow comes, you know, you're plowing the streets and, you know, the snow is pushed over, so they're going to be parking even more in the center. So, but yeah, that's, thank you very much.
If we can't correctly address, address you, we will have, us and staff will address that at the end of the meeting. If you want to stay or go home and watch us on TV, we just, we're not going to do
Okay, yep, nope, completely understand. Thank you very much.
Sorry, my mic wasn't on. Just for the record, we, we can't address you, we don't do that, but the board and staff will address that at the end of the meeting.
Understand, thank you.
Any other public participation? Anyone else for public participation? For the final time, anyone else for public participation? Seeing none, public participation is closed. Bond release, we don't have any bond releases tonight. We do have a new public hearing, so the secretary, please read the application, please.
Laurie, I don't think I got a, a public hearing notice.
I don't think I got a public hearing notice to read on, on this.
You didn't, I didn't get one either.
Was one in your package either? I can wing it.
Maybe give Matt one second. Okay, so let's, let's wiggle off the agenda.
Yeah.
The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Thursday, October 13th, 2022, regarding public hearing number 3047, 18 Mullen Road, expansion of outdoor storage, Connecticut Organics LLC applicant, CML Realty owner, map, 16 lot, 51, I-1 zone.
Thank you, good, good winging. There you go. Thank you very much. Will the applicant and the representative please come forward? Thank you. Nice job, Mr. Secretary. Good evening. I think you guys know the routine.
Yes.
It's been a while.
Good to, good to see you guys.
Mark Lockwood, representing Connecticut Organics on Mullen Road.
Rob Fry, same.
And Brennan Shanahan, I am the operations manager for Connecticut Mulch, 18 Mullen Road.
Good to be back. Appreciate the time. So, as the, the commission is aware, we were here in the spring, working on a text amendment for outdoor storage, not just for the applicant, but of course for town. So, we're here today to, now that the, the commission has approved that text amendment, to increase outdoor storage in the industrial zone for Connecticut Organics. Currently, they have a, they're utilizing storage at their facility, but they would like to increase it for better enhancing their throughput and output of the processed mulch that they currently are, are handling for their sister company. The amount of storage is approximately, if you look at these, the total site will be about 40%. The breakdown, which we have in, in the site plans that you have, is the side yard will be approximately 44.8% outdoor storage and the rear yard will be 36.5%, which is below the, the 50% maximum. Again, we discussed some of this in general last time, but, you know, the, the type of product that is stored here is agricultural mulch products. It's seasonal in nature, it does not sit for years and years on end. We can have, have the actual applicant can, if you have any questions about the product, but it will go in, it typically goes out in the springtime for consumer use and the processing starts, I believe Brennan, you start that right around now and goes now through the springtime for processing. So we're looking to, to better utilize their property for this. They're a bit of, been in a bottleneck over the last few years since the commission approved it in 2019. The furtherance of this supports the plan of conservation and development, as we had in the narrative, primarily with efficient use of land. They have a good sized parcel that's in the industrial zone and they can use this land better than having to try to acquire more land or, or make a bigger footprint, they can concentrate their work there. And also, the, the plan says that this type of, you know, agricultural support is, is good for the industrial zone to continue. So, if you have some specific questions or, Rob, anything to add, you know, I just want to give you a general overview of where we're at.
Thank you.
The product is, is, we had some pictures, it's all bagged mulch that's on pallets, you know, nicely stacked, it's not piles of, you know, scrap or anything, it's just agricultural mulch.
I don't have anything to add, I think that most of the folks on, on the commission are, are very familiar with why we're here. We've been here a lot. We do have the engineer here, if there are any specific questions about the plan, with that all.
Anything?
As we, our lawyers here are saying, you know, this, this will just allow the Connecticut Organics business that we have there to free up that bottleneck that we're currently feeling with their limited space for storage. In the prior years, we maximized that storage by middle of December, and then we're just sitting around and waiting for the sales to begin, which typically is around March 1st. And the downfall of that is that Connecticut Mulch, which is that 70 Mullen Road, is also running at full capacity at that time. So now we have both companies running at full capacity, which is a taxing on the staff and the logistics of it all. So this, this outdoor storage would be very beneficial to the success of our bagging operation. Thank you.
Thank you. I know it's been a long and arduous journey, because I know we're not the only commission. I know you've had a lot of meetings with staff, I know you had IWWA also last month or a couple of weeks ago, and you were before us before, for the text change to allow this to happen. So I know, we're getting familiar, you know, when we see you guys here lately, so. Not a bad thing either, just mentioning that. I know I have a bunch of questions, but I'm going to defer to other people first, if anyone else has anything, or would you just like me to start, or? Basically, it's also for you and also for staff. We get down to one of the parts is, is, it looks like, and I don't think we can tie this in, they have to come back to, they really should amend the special permit for application 2254 based on everything that's gone on correctly. Am I correct, staff?
2254?
Yes, by adding the 10.30 acres from 36 to 18 will require at least some action to amend special permit 2254 and any associated site plans previously associated with the portion of 36 since transferred to 18.
Right, that, we, the, the approach that we took was to kind of defer that action into the future, get 18 settled, and then we can work on whatever we need to do for 36. So I think we just wanted at this point to just acknowledge and document the fact that because of the lot line adjustment and the transfer of the 10 plus whatever acres it was, that, you know, we need to kind of do some cleanup post approval on some other things.
So we can't really tie that to this application?
No, I, I don't believe so.
I mean, I know that, I just wanted to get that in the record.
Right, nor do I think there's really a need to. We've acknowledged, you know, what you need to acknowledge at this point, so.
Yep. The bollards, I mean, I know basically, staff is saying there might not be a need for that, I'm interested in any comments from that, from the rest of my commissioners as we go forward with this today. And there's also an issue here with the parking spaces, we want to accept your parking spaces, which staff seems to feel is really appropriate for the business that you're doing there. Again, I just want to make that motion to, to fellow commissioners and for the record. And also, we've received some clarification on general condition 19, which is the screening. So I just want to make sure my fellow commissioners have read, I don't know if you have received that documentation. Did they receive that, staff?
Yes, they did, yeah.
The staff comments on screening?
Yes, yes.
Yes, we did.
So myself personally, as commissioner, I would like to see that added to the approval process, to staff's recommendation for condition 19. So I guess just to open up, I'm, I, you know, have a problem with this application at this point, but, just a couple of those things, I just wanted to bring up somewhere just for the record so we can go forward. So, any other comments from some of the commissioners? Commissioner Higley?
I'd like to see the bollards because it would be, it would make it tidy. There would be a demarcation spot and you wouldn't have to worry about anybody coming to say that you're over your, your allotted area and we wouldn't be bothering you with anything else. So I would, I personally would like to see the bollards.
Any other, any other questions for the applicant, anybody else? Any other, we still have some more discussion to do. Ready to close this public hearing, this had discussion? Yes.
I'm sorry, no.
Yeah, the staff might have something too, yes.
This had one, since we're going to the, on the bollards.
Yes.
We can look at those. There will be, the area, if you look at the site plan, there'll be millings and it will be defined and that has to, obviously, before we can go to work, staff, it's, there's an approval that, how we build things. So the marcation's going to be done by the milling. So if there's a concern about that, you know, it's going to be a prepared area, it's not just a grass field, for that point. The other, we were going to ask the commission on point 18. There was a request for a landscape architect.
Yep.
Several of the individuals that work at Connecticut Organics in the mulch, including Mr. Shanahan, they're certified foresters, is that correct?
I'm a licensed forester, been practicing forestry in the state of Connecticut for 20 something years, you know, I'm very familiar with trees, vegetation. And the owners of Connecticut Mulch are 30 years in the nursery industry and they've been working in nursery, you know, for many decades and they're working professionals as, as, you know, plant specialists.
And I know you guys have had conversations about this particular issue with staff, right? About, yes, I know there's been some extensive discussions.
You know, so we would just like to ask if that could be removed, the landscape architect portion.
Sure, if, no, my main, would staff have any?
No objection whatsoever, no.
Does that sound reasonable?
No objection, I wasn't aware of the, the background professionally of the individual involved, so that's perfectly sufficient.
Okay.
And then on this, the, the screening, you know, the staff, I know there's been back and forth, the applicant, you were out with staff and, you know, there's different screening things, so.
Yeah, yeah. I know there's been a lot of discussion about that, so.
What's this discussion? Which screening? Are we talking about the front yard, side yard?
The, the whole screening on the side.
On the side.
So between the two properties of 36 Mullen Road and 18 Mullen Road? Yeah, my comment on that is, you know, at Connecticut Mulch, which is the parent company of, of all these operations, the screening, we feel that it becomes a safety issue. We have 18 Mullen Road and 36 Mullen Road, both owned by our same company, sharing kind of the same area, general vicinity. And adding screening, we feel ends up being a, a visible block from the employees at both facilities to be able to keep an eye from a safety factor. You know, if, if an accident was to occur, if you have one guy at 36 or one guy at 18 and they were to witness such a, an incident, it would be very prudent for them to be able to call 911 and, you know, make this a quicker, safer operation. You know, you're asking us to hinder that ability by putting screening between two properties that we own and it, we really feel it is a safety factor that has not been considered in this application.
Okay, thank you. I know you had some other options that you guys decided not to go down, so, that being said. Any other questions from the, for the commissioners, for the applicant or staff?
Staff okay with the screening?
Yep.
No, just a couple of quick things. 18, condition 18, no objections whatsoever.
Give him one second, yep.
Just want to clean up, just some little nits on staff reviews. Town engineer did review the drainage calcs, he's okay, he's all set with that. WPC had no comment, of course. Fire had no issues or concerns. We got no comments from traffic, so apparently they didn't have any, any concerns as well. Bollards, I understand, no sense of ownership, yes, no, completely up to you. I understand what they're saying about the, the pavement, the parking spaces, the, the operation's highly mechanized. We were, we were fortunate to have a personal tour some weeks ago and very few number of actual, you know, employees involved in the, in the bagging part of it. So I think the parking is sufficient. And then in terms of the, the screen, I don't want to belabor the issue, we've spent a lot of time on it, of course, but, the, the language in the regulation that you adopted says shall. So, you know, different people might have different opinions about whether it's necessary or what could be done or should be done or whatever, but the fact is, it, it says shall in the reg, so it has to be, it has to be provided. Staff's approach, and I think we talked about this in the memo a little bit, was that this is the first time you're applying this regulation. So just giving you guys the opportunity to kind of think about that, since it is a mandate, you have to do it, but there are no standards in the regulations, there are no specifics like you do have for the buffers, you have very specific requirements for the buffers. So we think you do have some flexibility to work with the applicants, if they're willing, to, to look at some kind of creative approaches to, to doing, to doing that mandatory screening. I, I completely appreciate what you're saying about, about the safety. If there were some kind of opportunity to modify in the regs, maybe that, that could be looked at, but the language in the reg is very simple, it's just, you know, shall, shall be provided, so, kind of hamstrung on that, on that count.
That particular regulation was, you know, change was debated in nasium here.
It's my understanding.
Yep.
Right.
Sure you remember.
Mr. Chairman, we do remember that, and I know there was a lot of discussion. And we brought up, and I can remember, well, each property's unique and I think Mr. Shanahan was, you know, after he was out there with staff, you know, the level of how much needs to be, especially in the back portion of the side yard, right, where their properties are intertwined to one another. I think that was the level of, of the question of, you know, for the operators, I think the front of the street and, you know, where you come on Mullen Road where the public can see it. Because this, you know, it is in the industrial zone, so we're not looking at buffering or residential. We struggled with that, I know staff has, and it's, it's been a point, I know the applicant's been, you know, you know, looking at it too.
Yes, yep. Totally understand. Thank you.
I'll, I'll add that that, that the shall language, which I completely agree, that means we have to have some form of screening. I'm sorry.
Can your screening be low? If you're, if you're concerned about the safety of your workers and spotting an accident, can it be lowered?
I think this is exactly the sort of thing that, that we're, we're talking about, maybe coming to a conclusion here that, that we can all live with, is, is because of the vagueness of, of the statute, we can actually come up with something that's appropriate in, in the zone. There are no rules about it, it has to be every so many feet, it has to be so, so high, it doesn't say anything about those things. So, I think there's an opportunity here for us to work with you guys and figure out how we can still meet the letter of the law of, of screening, but not have a, a safety problem and, and potentially, you know, reduce the burden on, on, on our client as well.
Thank you. Any more questions for staff or the applicant? Commissioner Limo?
Yeah, I think when we were discussing this, when we were talking about the screening, we were talking about adjacent properties, different uses, a different zone.
Don't think, I don't, I hate to disagree, I, I'm not totally disagreeing with you, but I think it encompassed all of the above. with you, but I think it encompassed all of the above. Same too. I think that was the majority opinion. I remember going back.
Yeah, we were worried about it, like button up against a residential.
We were about a lot of things, yes.
Yeah, so this, what they're explaining, how it's one piece of property by the same owner with the same kind of use going on. Well, I don't know if we talked about that when we deliberated about this scenario. You know, we, we were more focused on privacy and another zone, like I said, or residence, a, a different property owner. So we just never brought this scenario up. Like, what if it's what you're proposing?
I think that night, we, we said that, you could read this to say screening as appropriate. So we have to have screening, but it can be screening as appropriate to the, to the circumstances of the site.
I think if staff is acceptable.
Yeah, you have to get, you're, you're the first one on this regulation, so what we do here could set the stage. That's the other dilemma. I'm, I'm a person really, you know, about precedent. It really means a lot to me. So I, I totally understand. We need to discuss that here among ourselves, I think, at this point. Is there any more discussion for the applicant or staff? I think staff has said we have some leeway here if we so desire. I am, before I, we close the public hearing, I am interested in staff's opinion about the bollards. If, if you care to elaborate.
They just seem.
Or not.
They just seem like a fairly simple, low-cost way of kind of demarcating that physically in a vertical kind of a plane, as opposed to relying upon, you know, something at the ground level that's going to be underneath pallets.
Right.
And just make it simple on those, only on those edges where, you know, you otherwise couldn't discern it just looking at it in the field. The other, the other edges are pretty easy to kind of see. They match up to, to certain features.
Yep.
But, you know, so just, that was the idea, just for the bollards. On the screening, again, I don't want to belabor the, the thing. Your industrial zones do allow a fairly broad variety of uses, so that was probably part of the thinking and, and this happens to be somewhat of a unique situation where the same owner has to, you know, to abutting. So, but that said, I think you do have the flexibility to kind of consider that and come up with something that you think makes sense. We're happy to, to work with you on that.
Would you, yes, I mean, how would we, if, if the commission was so inclined to do that, then how do we vote on this application and leave that open-ended?
Well, I, what they're proposing right now is what they initially submitted. Condition nineteen that I wrote up, which we've talked about a little bit, modifies that to a degree if, if people are amenable to do that. However, that still does include, I think it was thirty-five of the, of the white spruce.
Right.
Kind of in that linear. And those do get, you know, fairly big over time.
Yeah.
Takes a while, but, so to get to your question directly, I'm not sure if you could kind of do that on the fly. I think they're anxious to kind of get started. We want them to get started. It's been a long haul for everybody.
Yeah.
And.
Since February, I think, right? Yeah, in February.
You know, I think we're kind of at a point.
There were applications that came in in between, so.
Right, so I think we're kind of at the point where we, we can go with what they proposed, we can go with condition nineteen, or we can continue the public hearing for another two weeks and come back and we can sit down with them in that interim time and come up with something. If they're amenable to doing that, I don't have any particular to others one way or another, but that's going, again, that's going to be another two weeks. So I'll just put that out there.
Is there anything in your, you're suggesting in your condition nineteen that could make it easier for them somewhat, but still satisfy the, the desire of this commission with the regulations? Is there anything we could change in that that might compromise or satisfy all parties concerned?
Staff.
I, I can't say because I really don't know what the consensus of the commission is in terms of what their preferences or their views are about screening, what their intentions are, what they need to do.
I know, let's get back to the dilemma here.
It's kind of back and forth a little bit.
Commissioner Higley?
I'd like to say, to have staff have the final say on screening on this one. They've been here a long time. If it's low and it's safe for the employees, I'm sure staff is not going to approve anything that isn't within our realm of what we're looking for. So I'd rather just approve, just vote to approve it and allow staff to have the final say on screening on this one.
I don't have any objection to that. I just want you to understand that if we do that, what you see and what you get is what you're going to get. So don't, please don't come back afterwards and nitpick it and say it's not sufficient. That's not what we wanted.
No.
Da, 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 boo.
We don't do that.
Sorry. I know, I know. I trust you. I trust you. And, and vice versa. So that's fine.
Yes.
I think staff has, we've been working a long time and been very good dialogue.
Yeah.
And I, I would agree with that suggestion. I think we could, we have a baseline, right? And I think we can work down from there or change that to what Commissioner Higley said. I'm okay with, as long as you are with staff.
Yeah, I think staff's been out on the property. They, they're very familiar with this property and the situation that it, with the elevational changes and everything. It's, it's unique.
Yeah.
Same ownership.
Yeah.
And, you know, we've been working for months together. I don't see why we can't continue.
And we'd like, you know, the, the natural part of it. We don't want to put up a wooden fence or a chain link fence or something. So, you know, it might get more plantings up front and then they taper off in the back. There could be a lot of varieties. I think I'm, I'm okay as long as the applicant's okay with, with working with staff.
No objection, no.
All right, okay, sure, okay.
I'm okay. I'm just covering myself, so.
Any other questions for staff? Commissioner D'Antonio?
Yeah, I mean, on, on that note, I think if we can maybe find something in between, maybe in between the proposal and the, the possible condition nineteen to add more variety instead of just a single species of tree, just for diversity of species and just support the long-term growth of.
Right. And my, the general note that I'm getting is that there's a safety concern, there's a unique situation between the two ownerships and the two uses are compatible. So based on that kind of, those kinds of parameters, that's how the design would kind of be, would be set. So lower, a little more diverse, maybe not as dense, and those kinds of things, so. So we're, Mr. Chairman, we're fine.
Okay, all right. Any other questions for staff or the applicant?
Now, I didn't know if there was any public. I don't think so.
So we entertain a motion to close the public hearing and to approve and to skip.
You need to invite the public comment, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot, yeah, I forgot. Excuse me. Is there anyone in the public who'd like to speak for or against this application? Thank you, Lori. Is there anyone in the public who'd like to speak for or against this application for the final time? Seeing none. We all set with questions for staff and the applicant? Just ready for discussion among ourselves. So I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Higley, seconded by Commissioner DeGray to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye. The record showed it was seven nothing to close the public hearing. Now that we have some questions among ourselves to firm this up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Yeah, we do. We're not, we're not done yet. You got, well, they know that. Yeah, we're not done yet. We just closed the public hearing. Yeah. I thought you were just going back.
But you can leave.
Yeah, you can, you can leave if you want.
We weren't planning to leave. I thought you were.
Oh, I thought you were leaving. Okay. No, no, we're done with you. I thought you were leaving the building. Let's back up a little bit. We have a couple things here. You know, this is the first application that we've, we've done with this, with the regulation change, so it is kind of important what we do here. It seems like, seems like there is a reasonable request to change condition eighteen to at least waive or remove Connecticut licensed landscape architect from that. And that seemed to be reasonable. Staff seemed to agree to that. So I think there's consensus to do that, to change, to, I don't know, eliminate it or waive it? Just waive it?
Thought we just removed.
Yeah, this, this required plant.
So nineteen or eighteen.
No, no, not yet there yet. No, I think we should leave nineteen. I think that, at least, there was two of us that wanted to see the bollards.
Right, but if we get rid of eighteen, we better move it up.
No, we're not going to get rid of eighteen. It's going to make them. I think there was at least two of us that wanted to see the bollards. Is there any other, yep?
I didn't say anything, but I do like the idea of having the bollards because over time, milling grows.
Yeah.
Grass will grow up and then it's kind of difficult to decide, well, where's that line supposed to be? And not that your staff wouldn't be concerned about that, but as they disappear because of growth of the grass, it might be a little harder for them. The next thing you know is they're a little too close to the, to the road. So I, I think that would be a nice way to demartake, demartake those areas. That was my concern.
So let's stay on that one. So is there, Christopher?
Well, that's covered, I think, in condition seventeen on the, the one side.
On the one side.
On the one side.
Easterly, easterly side.
Yes. Well, the front northern, yeah, front northern. Yeah, so that, just, just to be clear, that condition does, I think, exclude the long side.
Yes.
Says some other like method on it. But it says some other like method at the corners of the area at each fifty-foot interval.
Right.
At the corners.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, all right. You think that covers it?
Yep.
You guys are comfortable with that?
Yep.
Everybody's comfortable?
Yep.
Okay. So now we get down to the screening. Nineteen, which probably needs to remain in it, we just need to reword that saying, with staff, screening designed to be provided with staff approval, staff input. Help me out here. What do you think? Does that sound reasonable to everyone?
Yeah.
John, what do you think on that, nineteen?
I think something like, the, the staff will work with the owner to develop landscape buffers as, as appropriate, something.
Okay, if you want, you want to work on that? Yeah, I think that's kind of in the direction where I think everyone wants to go. Matt, is that what I said again?
Well, yeah.
Staff will work with owner to develop a landscape, to develop landscape buffers as, as appropriate?
Yeah, I, just to distinguish between screening and buffers, just because they're kind of two different things. I don't want to get people mixed up. So, so we use the term screening. So the applicant will work with staff to develop a screening design that addresses the applicant's concerns with regards to safety.
Yeah.
And just leave it at that, I suppose. I mean, we, we, the record shows what it shows. We had the conversation. It'll be in the minutes. We were all here. We all heard the same thing. So I have sufficient direction, I think, to understand what we're doing. So.
Okay.
That would be enough. I just want to understand on eighteen, not to back up, but what we were going to do is we were going to eliminate the, I think it's the second sentence, the required planting design shall be created by a Connecticut licensed.
Oh, yeah.
Landscape architect having relevant experience, yada, yada.
Yep.
So that, but eighteen is going to stay, but we're just going to get rid of that sentence.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, all right, good. Thank you.
Yep. And we think the bollards are covered under seventeen, so we'll just, we'll leave that the way it is. Is there any other discussion on this or any other thing we missed? So just to go through it again, John, with you, it looks like the two changes we're going to make is, of course, in eighteen, we're just going to be removing that sentence. This required planting design shall be created by a Connecticut licensed architect having, you know, relevant experience and designing plantings within wetland adjacent upland review. We're going to remove that whole sentence in condition eighteen. And on nineteen, are you happy? You just worked with Matt to, to do that. Any other discussion?
No.
Everyone feel comfortable? So I'll entertain a motion to approve. Yes. Whenever the secretary's ready.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, yeah. I'll like to make a motion to approve public hearing number three oh four seven in, in conformance with the resolution prepared by staff with the following amendments to the conditions listed. So condition number eighteen, the second sentence will be stricken from the, from the condition with, with respect as it relates to Connecticut licensed landscape architects having, being involved. And also with respect to condition number nineteen, the, the applicant, that'll be stricken entirely and it'll be as follows. Applicant to work with staff to develop screening along the front and side yards as, as required. Is that?
Well, the screening would just be on the east of the side.
Okay. And, and not the front. Okay. To develop screening along the eastern boundary.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Alamo. So motion made to approve by Secretary Petronella with the amended amendments, seconded by Commissioner Alamo. Any discussion on any of that? Seeing none. Secretary, when you're ready, you can call the roll.
Louis Fiore.
Four.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
Virginia Higley.
Four.
Frances Alamo.
Four.
Christian D'Antonio.
Four.
Nicholas LaFakas.
Four.
And John Petronella is four.
The record indicate that it was unanimous, seven nothing with those condition changes and all twenty-eight conditions. Thank you, gentlemen. You've been approved with those and we'll see you next time for the other thing whenever you guys are ready to come. So, thank you.
You have been here a lot.
You have been here a lot, yes. Moving on to number nine, old public hearings. I guess this is going to be remaining on the table, but I do believe we do need to make some type of indication to the public as to why. Would you like the chairman to do it or would you like staff to indicate why? I'm more than willing, but if you'd like to.
We are working on the final motions and hoping to have the petition issue finalized by the next meeting. That is our goal.
Thank you. Yeah, that is the goal, to hopefully have that petition. The sixty-five days is up in our next meeting in November, first meeting in November, after I had no sleep for three days. Yes. So that's the status.
Can I ask one question? You're, and I, I just want clarification.
No, forget it. It's on the table, so.
It's on.
On the status of the application's fine.
We're, then, never mind.
Yeah.
Never mind.
But it's on the table.
Yep, never mind.
Okay. That's, you need to be careful when things are on the table.
Yeah.
Okay.
It was just clarification on when we will have the motion ready. It will be ready for next meeting?
Can't guarantee.
I am, that is the goal.
Thank you.
And we will inform the, the public through the agendas and on the website either way.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that status. Appreciate that. Onto new business, site plan review nineteen oh three, the dash ninety Elm Street. Do you want me to read it, John? Would you like to?
I'll, I'll get it. Proposed site plan modifications for Popeyes Drive-Thru Restaurant, Enfield Development LLC, applicant, Enfield Square Realty LLC plus Enfield CH LLC plus Enfield Nason LLC, map forty-three, lot seventeen, BR Zone.
Thank you. Is the applicant here? Make, identify yourself for the record, please.
Good evening, Chairman and members of.
Yeah, I want you to pull the mic closer to you if you can. There you go.
Yep. Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. My name is John Ralph. I'm Audrey O'Connell Associates. I'm representing PNZ Restaurants for the Popeyes at ninety Elm Street. You guys have seen this before because we've had conditional approval last May. So we've submitted for site plan modification and had, and wanted to address some of the comments that were received. I can put up a plan up here on the screen here. Hopefully that'll, no, there we go.
One more. Thank you.
So luckily, this was a pretty short comment list here, so it should be pretty short and sweet. I guess the easy ones were, there's some dead shrubs in that lawn tractor left on the premises. Those are going to be, obviously, the shrubs will be replaced. The lawn tractor will be removed upon completion and that's, that is ready to be completed as soon as possible. So we're ready to go on that. The other item that had changed from a modification standpoint, the northeast corner, previously there was a landscaped island where the triangular hatched area was. That has been removed. And we had added a space on the western side of the site in the corner here. I don't know if you can, you can see that there. But we had gotten some comments about those, those items and the space unfortunately was non-conforming, so the comments were to remove the parking space on the west side and create a landscaped area. And that would sufficiently add an open space area that's equivalent to our, exceeding the amount of area would have, that we would have gained from the landscaped side. So we're just going to, you know, have an updated plan showing the landscaped area where that space was and keep the hatched-out parking striping. And that was, that was really it. There wasn't too many other comments there. I think that addresses the comments that you guys set forth. I was going to keep this really short and. I think that addresses the comments that you guys set forth. I was going to keep this really short and sweet, so do you guys have any questions or comments?
Well, I do. I guess, I guess I'm ready. I'm sure everyone's doing it. We do have a couple of things here for, I'm not going to get into the transmittal letter removing the scope and narrative, but providing a complete plan set and all the sheets that are changing. Is that, that has not been done yet, correct?
No, it's just really just a cleanup item that will do post-approval because the changes were so minor.
Minor, in nature.
I just wanted to make sure that all the sheets are consistent when we get to the point of final approval.
Yep.
So we'll take care of that.
Okay, removing the non-compliant parking stall, you know, right, we just talked about that. Replacing the deed landscaping and removing the, we already talked about that. How about confirming writing with the mall the ownership management that used to the off-site parking is approved and provide a written documentation as such? Has that been done yet?
That has not. The owner of the mall has changed since the beginning of that plan. That seems to be a very difficult.
Yeah, we're hearing that quite often from a lot of different areas, and you're not the only one.
Task? Obviously, it's within its parcel, you know, right along that, you know, the BS, you know, shopping center zoned area there. And, you know, I think, I think the addition to the Popeyes, as you know, it's already been built, so we're trying to get our approval here for the CO. But I think it fits in with the scope and the use of that area. You know, I think there's a Burger King across the street and a couple of other restaurants, so I think, you know, in general, that the Popeyes will be a great addition to the community.
So you don't, you're having difficulty getting that from the mall owners?
Yeah.
Why am I not surprised? So any questions? Are any questions from other commissioners? Any questions for the applicant?
I've got one question. If, I'm looking at the planner review comments and so forth. And the first, number one, revising the scope narrative eliminates second and third bullets on nine, twelve, twenty-two transmittal letter, which would be this, the transmittal letter from RJ O'Connell and Associates, Inc. Is that correct?
Yeah, this one was a little, got a little bit confused, not too bad, but what would happen was Rick, Rick, the CEO, Rochelli, had already approved a couple of the things that were included in the bullet list when they submitted for the P&amp;Z part, so they didn't really need those to be in the scope for your purposes, because Rick already did those as field mods during the construction. And he has the ability to do that as a zoning officer, as long as they're minor in scope and that kind of thing. These were things that he couldn't approve, he felt, in that, in that way.
Yep.
So that's why we're eliminating those two.
Okay.
Second and fourth.
All right, thank you.
Yep. Can I just speak just real quick to the parking?
Yep.
We don't have a particular issue with the parking. One of the things that we're noticing, not just in terms of this particular user, but many of the users that have drive-throughs, is that the percentage of their actual volume of business that is, goes through the drive-through as opposed to people that park and go in and order and eat, or go back to their car and leave, is upwards of, some people have told us seventy percent of the volume of their business. So at some point, when we're looking at our reg amendments, we'll take a look at the parking ratios and probably bump those down maybe.
Yeah.
And the other part is that people casually will park wherever they park. If there's parking right there and, you know, they can't find a spot. But the likelihood of that, I think, is diminished because of the way these drive-throughs operate. And that's why I think you're seeing that they're doing the doubles, the double lanes, a lot of them now, instead of the single lane. So just thought I'd put that out there, so.
Makes a lot of sense.
If anyone was concerned.
Yep. Any other questions, any other concerns?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I just have a question. With that condition about the off-site parking, is that, is that going to, do we think that'll cause a problem for the applicant?
I-
If we keep that condition in-
I would probably eliminate that condition, as long as everyone's comfortable with, you know, the parking that we have on site and the operation itself in terms of the drive-through. It would probably be better to eliminate, eliminate that condition.
Great, thanks for, thanks for that.
Mr. Chairman, so the mall does have the covenants and restrictions, the document that is enormous, and basically it does discuss that there is shared parking throughout, so.
Okay.
I think that it's safe to assume that there'll be adequate parking.
So you don't see the need for us to remove that, just leave it as is? So it doesn't need to written since it's already in the-
You know, I think it's safe to remove it, because I don't think it's going to be an issue at all.
I can add an item if you-
Pardon?
Like Matt was saying, the program for the Popeyes is predominantly drive-through.
Yeah.
You know, not as many people park anymore. It's just, it's not, you know, what I think. And according to, from the shopping center, which I think requires a five parking spaces for one thousand square feet of total area, this, you know, and it says in some of the comments that there's so much ample extra spaces at the furthest point away from where the shopping center is. So those parking spaces are going to predominantly be empty.
Yeah.
So even if, which, you know, I don't see, there's going to be a problem there, there should be extra spaces along that area anyway, so.
I agree. Christian D'Antonio, which condition did you want removed? Which item?
That's condition fifteen.
Fifteen?
Yep.
Yep, there is. Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Is there pretty much approval to remove item fifteen as a condition?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Mr. Secretary, do you have that? Remove item fifteen?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Seeing no discussion, does the secretary make a motion to approve?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve SPR number nineteen oh three in conformance with the resolution prepared by staff dated ten thirteen two thousand and twenty-two, along with the following amendment to the conditions to eliminate condition number fifteen and all other conditions.
The other remaining twenty-two?
The remaining twenty-two shall remain.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Secretary Petronella, seconded by Commissioner LaFakas, was that? Yes, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, whenever the secretary is ready for a roll call.
Lou Fiore, four. Linda DeGray.
Four.
Virginia Higley.
Four.
Francis Alamo.
Four.
Christian D'Antonio.
Four.
Nick LaFakas.
Four.
And John Petronella is four.
Thank you. The record showed it was unanimous, seven to nothing to accept the application with the condition change removal, so you're all set.
I just have one question because it keeps being asked of me. When do you plan an opening? I mean-
We're trying to open as soon as possible. They already got employees kind of ready to go, and along with this
Right.
miscommunication with the contractor and such has kind of put a little speed bump on this. We're just, you know, here taking responsibility, doing it the right way.
You're doing the right thing and-
Getting this pushed through the right way.
Just letting you know.
With Matt, he's been a great help, too.
Just let you know, people are anxious for your Popeyes, so.
Yeah, we'll do it as soon as we can.
And thank you, thank you for, I think you stated exactly what the issue was, and thank you for working with staff to get this rectified. Appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Very professional on your guys' part. Thank you very much. Moving on to SPR nineteen oh five.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, SPR number nineteen oh five, ninety Elm Street, administrative approval request to host a special event. Leanne Sealy, applicant Enfield Square Realty LLC plus Enfield CH LLC plus Enfield Nason LLC, LLC, map forty-three, lot thirty-one, BR Zone.
Thank you. This is administrative approval request for a special event, so I guess staff want to very-
Yes, briefly, this is the LEAD Fest Law Enforcement Against Drugs and Violence, and, you know, basically the LEAD Drug and Violence Prevention Program in the United States. They're proposing a midway rides, concessions, games at the northeast corner of the mall, which has been the location of-
If, excuse me, if you, I'm going to change the agenda after this, if you guys want to stay five more minutes.
There's not going to be, nothing we can say.
Yeah, I'm going to get them move that up. Go ahead. I'm sorry to interrupt everyone, sorry, but I didn't want them to leave. Go ahead.
Okay, so similar events have been held in the same location, so. Pretty much from October twentieth to twenty-third, so if every, if this is approved.
The old carnival.
Go to the carnival on October twentieth.
Any questions? It's been a special event. Do we actually have to do an approval on this?
No, you don't.
No, just administrative approval. We're all set, and it's, thank you for the information.
Just a report.
So the carnival, the old carnival's coming back to the square. We haven't had that in a few years. All right. All right, so.
Rick is doing the dunk time.
Well, poor guy, because I'm sure there'd be a lot of people going to try to get that. Poor Rick. I'm going to enter, I want to place this pizza palace under opportunities and unresolved issues, so I'm going to entertain a motion to move, I have, I forgot what number opportunity, number seventeen up on the agenda so we can at least kind of address that between us and staff, since the residents came here. Is there a motion to move item seventeen up to now? There's a motion made by Commissioner Higley, seconded by Commissioner DeGray to move item seventeen up to right now in the agenda. All those in favor? But the record showed there was seven in favor. I know, I know you've heard some of this, I know it came in front of the council, so the staff have some type of update that we can, you know, give the residents who came here.
So like I say, I can't report much. I do know that Rick Rochelli, our zoning enforcement officer, has been in contact with fire marshal and, and traffic control, and we are working on it. I can't say much more than that because I don't have all the details.
Yeah, I know, nor the town manager.
It is, we know that there is an issue, we know there's a big issue, and we're trying to figure it out.
Yeah, the question, the question I had on that, just because of my own education, is did they come, did they have to get a new license from going to that bar to live entertain?
That's one of my questions.
Okay, okay, okay.
I was actually looking through the regulations.
Cafe?
And they have to come before us for live entertaining.
Ginny, you're not on?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Say it again, please.
It's, it's their liquor license, and it's also for live entertainment, they didn't originally have it, so they'd have to come back with a modification to us.
Right, but a cafe license allows them extra hours of operation.
Right.
As opposed to a restaurant license.
Right.
And I don't know if the cafe license allows entertainment.
But it's my understanding, and if I'm wrong, so be it, but it's my understanding that before the remodel, they didn't have live entertainment.
Right.
So they didn't have to come to us for the remodel, but they had, I think they had to come to us for the change in status on their entertainment.
So that's going to report. I can tell you, from my position, I know the town manager, you guys came in front of the council last meeting, the town manager and the town council, your councilman, and the other councilman, the town manager, I'm sure Chief Fox, everyone is aware of the situation, and it's in progress, and hopefully, you know, stay, stay tuned, stay with us, but we're certainly aware of the situation, everyone's looking at it.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And thank you, thank you guys for allowing us to do that, since the residents were patiently, you know, waiting. You're welcome. Have a good night. Okay, old business, this application, SPR nineteen hundred, Seven Hazard Avenue, has been withdrawn, so they've decided not to do that drive-through change, so that, that's coming off the agenda, that's been officially withdrawn. Moving on to the next item, enforcement reports, SPR seventeen thirty-six, NIWWA five eighty-four, One Peerless Way, so staff. Go ahead.
I'm filling in for Rick. I didn't feel that he really needed to sit through this meeting for a two-minute presentation. So basically, this application was approved on twelve twenty-one seventeen, SPR seventeen thirty-six. It was for two industrial condominium-type buildings at One Peerless Way. To date, they have constructed the buildings, the bonds have been paid. However, there's been no CO issued.
No CO.
No E&amp;S has been used. They're renting out spaces, and the owner continues to cancel inspections. They've pretty much gone through every method of violations and citations, and at this point, they are seeking permission to put this in, or push this to the town attorney for further action.
And just so I can, I just want to emphasize to the rest of commissioners, is, you go through the document that we received, there's a host of violations over the last year, almost two years now, that this owner has not replied to. I think the owner was actually fined and has yet to pay the fine, if I read to one of the documents correctly here. So this, in my opinion, as your chair, this particular issue has gone on long enough. The zoning enforcement officer has bent over backwards to try to make it work with this particular landowner. And to me, it's like, you know, I don't want to fault anyone, certainly not our zoning enforcement, I don't understand why it was his responsibility. There's no CO, so what's the building department been doing on this? I mean, aren't they responsible? I mean, I was always told in my junior things that they actually have more legal muscle in the building department than the zoning enforcement officers, so I don't understand what has happened here, how this has gone on this long, and they don't have a CO.
I will have to ask the building official that question.
Appreciate it if you would. That came from the planning zoning chairman.
Okay.
Because, you know, to me, that's like, what the heck? I'm being quite honest with you, and I'm being quite honest with my fellow commissioners.
Mr. Chair, wouldn't it be normal if there's no CO issued, they didn't comply to all the town regulations?
I guess, yeah, yeah, yeah.
They won't issue a CO unless you're up to par.
So why, you know, why? Yeah, why, why have we gone this long?
Yeah.
I guess that's my point.
Probably the CO, they haven't complied to all the regulations.
Yep. So let's-
Basically, Mr. Chair, you know, they're occupying a building that doesn't meet code or the fire regulations and so forth, so it is a, it's a safety issue, and I'm not sure what the, what the authorities can do, but you would think that they should be able to go in there and vacate, have the building vacated, and essentially condemned, because it's not inhabitable without a CO, or habitable.
And they won't get a CO until they comply.
And I think the last issue here in this one, which caught some of our eyes, was about a month ago, they were finally starting to work on their drainage ditch in the front, I call it drainage ditch, but that's probably the wrong term. John could probably help me out, or Ginny. And I don't think they ever got a permit for it. I think they just started to work on it. So again, I think there's a consensus here to do whatever needs to be done. Thank you.
So we may forward this to town attorney for-
Do you need an official vote, or just the consensus?
I think that's fine.
Yes, are you here for?
No, I'm just, I'm just listening to the conversation.
Oh, okay, okay.
To see what's going on in the town.
Oh, okay, all right. Okay, yeah, thank you.
We are televised. This is televised. But we're glad you're here.
All right, moving on. Is there any correspondence? Seeing none. Commissioners' correspondence. I know, Lori, you were, we were working, or I think you've made contact with the CROG about the mall study. I'm not sure if you physically have been able to do that yet, or-
I don't have an update. I think we have a meeting scheduled, so.
That's what it was, I'm sorry, thank you. So hopefully we'll get some more. Commissioner Alamo, I don't think you were here last meeting. Basically, if you remember, we had that, that study, the CROG representative.
It's the traffic impact study.
I was here for that, yep.
So basically, we're waiting for some more input, because we brought up some good things about Elm Street, about the safety issues for walkers and bikers and things on Elm Street, so we're hoping to get her back so we can take the next step on that.
Right. So I did have one thing on Commissioners' correspondence.
Yeah, absolutely, please.
Just to follow up with, Lori, I mentioned it a couple of times, IDs, so we can go on to property when we get our-
Anytime you want to go to the police station and get one, you have the ability.
Oh.
So I don't think, I believe you, you should probably call this to make sure the officer that does that is there, but we just kind of walked in and they were-
So they have something for Enfield Planning and Zoning there? Okay.
It's my understanding, yeah.
No, because we're, you know, when we get these applications, we get our packets in, and you want to go on to somebody's property to look. We need to have something.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. I didn't know that, thanks.
So I was privileged to be sponsored by the town to go to the SNEPA conference the last week, Southern New England APA, American Planning Association, and it was very well-attended. It's the first conference we've, I've been to live in person since, obviously, COVID-nineteen. The emphasis on all the sessions was equity, diversity, and housing. Of course, a little bit of climate change. A lot of good information, especially for the housing, the housing study that we're going to have to do and report to in the, in the POCD, as we've, we've discussed in the previous meeting. The big, the big thing, Public Act twenty-two twenty-five, another public act for us to contend with. So this is on electric vehicle charging stations. Basically, for non-state facilities, the act requires that any new commercial- Basically, for non-state facilities, the act requires that any new commercial or multifamily residential buildings constructed on or after January 1st, 2023, with 30 or more parking spaces, they will have to install Level 2 or Direct Current Fast Charging Stations for electric vehicles in at least 10% of its parking spaces. So, basically, so if you've got a multifamily development or a commercial development, you've got 30 spaces or more, you will be required to, to take 10% of those and, and install EV charging stations.
And we have till 2023 to have our regulations updated for this?
Um-
Or sooner?
Even if we don't update it, we have to do it.
Yeah, yeah, that's my point, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
It's one of those things, so this, this is where one of those things, case law trumps your, your regulations.
Yep, yep.
So, basically, anything that's approved after January 1st will have to be, will require these.
Yep.
So, we have a couple of questions, whether or not, you know, it says it's multifamily, but if it's multifamily apartments or, you know, separate dwelling units, we're not sure whether they count that as multifamily, so.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So, is that anything constructed after January 1st or approved?
Actually, approved, I think. That's our, that's my interpretation, and, and talking with staff and other colleagues, that seems to be what we think.
Mr. Chair? Yep.
Yeah, I got a question. So, when we calculate, formulate parking amount, number of parking spaces, would these EV spaces take away from the total number? In other words, can only EV cars park there?
No, they'd be included.
Okay, so somebody without an EV car can park in that spot?
That was my question, but my guess is yes.
That is my question.
My guess is yes.
Okay.
So, I don't know how-
Now, we're going to have EV wars now.
Right.
Not, not, something else for Jim to take care of.
[laughing].
Okay, anything else? Applications to be received?
So, there's already one on there, SPR 1906, 3739 Pearl Street, that's a change of use to allow for a cafe. And we have XZA 2202, which is our Town of Enfield application for the public art exemption, and XZA 3048, which is also a Town of Enfield application for the modification to the marijuana setbacks and the elimination of the possibility for variances. Public hearing 3049 at 92 Main Street for Salus Brothers, and that's going to be mixed-use retail and apartments, and site plan for the new parking lot. PH 3050, 161 Post Office Road, this is a one-lot split subdivision, and SPR 1905 at 90 Elm Street, which is the Lead Fest that we just discussed.
Yeah. Nothing about the Alden Avenue? Did that get removed?
The Alden Avenue?
To Jim.
90 Alden Avenue is-
Oh, didn't we receive that already?
We did receive it, it's still pending.
Yeah, I thought, I believe we received that, but yeah.
Yes, it's still, still pending.
They're doing some modifications.
Okay, okay. That possibly could be on our agenda, the next agenda?
To be, to be determined.
Probably more the 10th.
The 10th? So, we will have two public hearings for regulation changes at the next meeting?
Yes, because we've heard back from CROG already.
Oh, you have heard back from CROG? Okay, okay. Any questions?
Nope.
Any, well, we already did opportunities, any, having said that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move second.
Motion made by Commissioner Higley, seconded by Commissioner DeGray. Adjourn all those in favor. Am I saying aye? But the record showed the Enfield Planning and Zoning meeting of October 13th has ended at 8:16. Thank you very much, everyone.
We have a full-